...after conversation with our Dogtown staff last Wednesday and Thursday. And their feedback, both their concerns, but also the opportunity that they wanted to have in doing some things differently, we want to honor that. And so, that decision was made last week. But there's more to the story. And that's kind of where we are today. So I want to introduce a few folks up, or call a few folks up to the table, up onto the, I guess it's a stage.
Platform.
Platform. And with that, I'll have, each of them will kind of introduce who they are, why they're here, and we'll talk through why we were checking out the organization in the first place, and we'll walk through how that brought up the opportunity for a trade, why we were considering that, and all of that kind of thing, and then we'll open it up to the questions that people have. So I'm going to start with Sue Cosby, who's our Senior Director for our Life Saving Centers.
Chair.
You can bring a chair. And then, who are you and why are you here?
Hi, I'm Sue Cosby, I'm the Senior Director of Life Saving Centers. So basically, I help provide leadership for any building that has Best Friends staff in it and animals in it. So Best Friends has programs across the country where we have staff working in other organizations' buildings, and you're going to meet Holly, who oversees those programs. But anytime there is a building that has Best Friends staff in it, it's Best Friends Building, Saving Lives, and that's all the way from New York to Los Angeles and a lot of places in between, including here in Utah.
All right, thank you. Michelle Weaver is our Animal Care Director, and obviously, we could have pre-staged this if it was everybody with their chair. And Michelle Weaver is the Director of Animal Care at the Sanctuary.
Yeah, so, well, Judah just introduced me, but I'm also currently the interim manager in Dogtown while we're recruiting for a new manager. And I've been with Best Friends, for those of you who haven't met me or learned about me, I have been here since 1997, so I'm very invested in the organization. The majority of my time here at the organization has been with Dogtown, starting out as a caregiver, and as a caregiver for seven years, before moving into a management role, and then into this role. So I'm good to talk about Dogtown, if I needed.
All right. Dr. Carly is our Senior Manager for Animal Care, and has taken on a new role which is very pertinent to the conversation today.
Hi, so yes, I am Dr. Carly, and I am moving into a new role, which will be overseeing all of our behavior programming, as well as research for applied animal behavior. For those of you that don't know me, my PhD is in cognitive science, which is actually a focus on understanding the human mind, but it brings together six different fields of discipline. And my approach was to enter this program of cognitive science to look at understanding the human mind from evolutionary perspectives. And what that comes, understanding animal behavior cognition, and that was my focus for my undergrad studies, as well as my graduate studies. And my whole point in pursuing my studies is to really truly help the animals and understand the animal minds, so that we can help those in a variety of situations, whether that be animals here at the Sanctuary, and shelters, rescues, foster homes, whatever the situation might be. And before coming here, I was Executive Director of a rescue in South Louisiana, where I worked with over 25 shelters across the state.
And finally, and Holly, I'm not going to make you sit up here for the whole time. But if you could stand up and just introduce yourself here, and in large part because this is the broader context of the work, beyond the Sanctuary and our own programs.
Yeah, so I'll happily ask any questions that may have to do with outreach. So I oversee all of our outreach programs, with the exception of where our life-saving centers are. So I oversee our mission advancement, regional teams, and legislation and advocacy areas. One example of the areas in which, and the Best Friends Network, made up of our nearly 3,000 network partners, many of which are shelters, rescue groups, paid-in-aid organizations, I oversee that area as well. One example of, one of the areas I oversee is our embed programs, which a lot of you, I don't know, many people at Best Friends have been lucky enough to go to our embed program in Palm Valley, Texas. And it was the most in-need shelter in America just a couple of years ago, meaning more animals were dying there than any other shelter in the US that we knew of. And they just finished up their fiscal year, and our team has been there now for about 18 months, working side by side with them. And they were taking in about 30,000 animals a year, and 20,000 of those were being killed not too long ago. And they just ended their fiscal year after us being there sort of side by side with 18 months, and we've really ramped up the program just in the last few months with Liz's team doing the community cab program there. And at the end of September, they saved 10,000 more lives this fiscal year than they did the year before. 10,000 more lives. And so I feel very grateful and lucky to be working with a team who's working in some pretty tough conditions alongside some pretty incredible people, facing really tough decisions every day.
All right, thank you, Holly. So, before we get into the kind of background of our connection with, connecting with the National Canine Center and our work, part of the reason I wanted Holly here is, there's going to be a time where we really want to put it in the context of not just the work that we do at the Sanctuary, not just the work that we're doing in the life-saving centers, but really everywhere that we're trying to save dogs. And then there are people who are trying to save dogs and don't have the support and resources that they need. So with that, I also want to begin with a straight-up apology from the perspective of the way communication around our consideration has happened. I messed that up. You know, there, it's obviously a very passionate subject for our caregivers, it's very passionate for us, it's a very passionate topic for all of our supporters. And as we were initiating this work, we didn't include the right stakeholders in the conversation. And my apologies, and this is some of, putting some of that back, I can't take that back, but we can kind of get a common understanding of why we're here and why we were thinking about this, and why we're still going to be continuing to look for options for dogs. Not all of the dogs that are in our care are, those aren't the only dogs we're really thinking about here. So, in the spring of this year, we connected with Amy Sadler and her new project in working with the National Canine Center, which is a very focused program for dogs that are failing in shelters and need one last chance before euthanasia decisions are being made, really for behavior. And we know from our network, we know from the challenges we have in our own life-saving centers, we know from the challenges that we have in the work that we do at the Sanctuary, and some of that challenge that we have is that we can't bring them all here. That we, it's an imperative to find more life-saving tools and to understand what else is being done out there. And so, when she reached out to us, and we know that there's some controversy around her approach, so as we were looking at, is this a good thing for our work, meaning is it good for the dogs, we enlisted Dr. Carly, who's been a very strong advocate and personally challenged me on why would we be considering working with organizations that do differently from us. And when I say do differently, while we have a position statement on our website that is clear on our approach, it doesn't, and we are purposefully not condemning other people's approaches that we don't know anything about. But we do know there's controversy, and I did want to know that if we were going to be considering this, that we were actually checking on it personally, from our own organization and from leadership. And so, you know, I'd like you to tell folks about your experience. You can take, I will not be using my name.
Okay. Yes, so I was asked to go visit the National Canine Center in June, and I will be honest that I was uncomfortable with this, but I wanted to experience and see what else was out there. And while I had a lot of perceptions about Amy and her programmings, I wanted to, I needed to go in with an open mind. And with that, we all agreed, myself, Amy, and Sarah, who she works very closely with, to be open the entire time, and had very open dialogue, open questions, nonjudgmental. And thank goodness we did, because that's the way it should be. And so I spent three days, at least 14 hours onsite at the National Canine Center over the course of those three days, working directly with the 36 dogs that were there. And I saw a variety of different trainings, some of which we do not do here, and that's why I think we're all here today, to discuss this. But what I saw was really a nice foundation and basis of positive relationship-based training, and that's what we all can agree on in this room. And I was happy to see that. Yes, I did see dogs on modified prompt collars and dogs on e-collars. Not every dog, that is, they don't jump to that first, they start with all of the relationship-based training, they explore all of the avenues that we explore here at the Sanctuary, and they move to these other high-end aversive tools, as I have come to refer to them as, when nothing else is working. They've tried everything, they've exhausted all efforts, and this is strictly a training facility, where they're able to really focus and hone in and look at each dog as an individual. And that was very apparent to me, that they absolutely looked at each dog as an individual, same as we do here. And while I was there, I was surprised, honestly. And I saw great relationships between the dogs and their handlers, I saw really beautiful training happening, and while I say it's a structured training program, it's not just train, train, train. These dogs get to have a great time, they, yes, they do their playgroups, they do different dog introductions, and they just get free time with their handlers there as well. And it also offers the opportunity for numerous foster opportunities, because they have onsite housing for shelter staff, that shelter staff send their staff there to learn how to train, the basis of foundation, the basis of training, with positive relationship-based training. And so there are dorm rooms onsite, so those dogs have the opportunity to have sleepovers whenever the handlers want, and they always want to, I saw that every single night. There's also a house in town where Amy and the other leaders, they rotate out, rotate in and out, they're leaders to lead the training program day in, day out, and they rotate out the, that's a specialized foster opportunity, because that really is a true home environment. The dorm rooms are dorm rooms, but it's better than, it's a glorified real-life room, if you will, I mean, they really are staying there. But then again, there's the house in town that I stayed at, there was a foster dog there, and there's, again, just really, really great training. And I will admit that I did see the e-collar training happening, and I saw dogs on the modified pinch collars, but what I was surprised to not see, and the whole time I'm there, I am constantly looking at the dog's body language. I'm constantly looking at, assessing, and analyzing in my own mind, what do I think that they're feeling, what responses are they giving to their handlers? And I have to be honest in saying that with them using the higher-end aversive tools, I did not see pain, I did not see observable reaction to these tools in a negative way. I also worked with dogs that had previously been exposed to these tools, but were no longer being trained on these tools. And that is the goal of this, of their training, is that when a dog needs to be trained on these higher-end aversive tools, it's because they're not making a breakthrough with the dogs. And it's simply to, and the way they put it, to get their attention, and figure out which tools they will respond to, and as soon as they are responding, then they wean them off of those tools. No dog leaves their facility on these tools. The facility does not actually own any of the dogs there. Again, these are dogs coming from shelters, that shelters are sending them there for this kind of glorified board and training, because they are not able to make progress in their shelters. And so, my point being is that I saw dogs that had been weaned off of these tools, and that's a big concern for a lot of us in our industry and that really know about behavior science and know about the research, is the breakdown after these tools have been used on dogs. And it's, I wanted to walk away from their kind of feeling differently than I did, honestly, because I saw really great things. I did not see relationship breakdowns, I saw solid relationships with all of the handlers, and it's not the same handlers every day. The trainers and the handler, and the handlers are on a rotation basis, so the dogs have that opportunity to generalize what they've learned to a variety of different people under a variety of different contexts and environments.
So, it was with that feedback, obviously, that we're like, okay, this might be a good option, we have dogs here that we know would be happier in a home, and if it's not right for the dogs that we have here, we have dogs in our life-saving centers that that environment's not ideal for, the Sanctuary's not currently able to take and be their support. And so it's within that context of what are our needs, but also, you know, in the work that Holly's doing with other organizations, who are the dogs that are still being killed? And given our commitment to all of the dogs at the Sanctuary as an individual, and our commitment to meet their needs, that doesn't end just because we don't have them in our care. And so I want to have a little bit of context from you, Sue, in terms of, as we're working with shelters in our program cities where we're really helping them be able to save more dogs than they've ever been saving, what are the challenges that they have that we're trying to help with, that we're also taking some of those on? And partly because this is why, why are we looking beyond our own capabilities, why are we looking beyond what we can handle ourselves?
Yeah, so we have life-saving centers in many cities across the country, and they're working both within their city, partnering with the Animal Control Agency, and in the case of Salt Lake City, they're actually working with shelters across the entire state alongside the Sanctuary to help get every shelter to no kill. And through those efforts, we do a lot of work, which includes animals other than dogs, includes cats as well. But in terms of dogs, the need for life-saving, as Judah pointed out, has, over time, as shelters are being more and more successful, the dogs that are still facing being killed in shelters right now are the dogs, and if you're volunteering at Dogtown, especially if you're volunteering with some of the more challenging dogs, that you know and appreciate that those dogs are dogs that are savable and they deserve to live. And those are the dogs that are also in our life-saving centers, they are Best Friends dogs. All of the dogs in our partner shelters and in our life-saving centers and here in the Sanctuary are valuable. And so right now, we actually have a waiting list of quite a number of dogs, including another one that came up this morning, for dogs in our life-saving centers, for which the life-saving center situation, which, they're all a little bit different, but if you guys have ever been to Los Angeles, or seen what we have available in New York, which is a really small space, they're really designed much more similarly to a shelter than a sanctuary. And so there's the smaller cages, there's, in the case of New York, there's no indoor-outdoor access, Georgia also very similar to a shelter in terms of the caging. So the dogs in those situations, it's not ideal for them, particularly long-term. And so when we get a dog in there that we're really working to try to solve behavior problems for, in order to save lives in those communities, we're almost, we're almost starting from, like, behind the starting line, because the housing situation isn't as ideal as we would want that, for them to be. And so, so there's a sense of urgency for us in order to find solutions for those dogs, both for those dogs as individuals, but also so that we can continue to help our partners who are faced with killing these dogs every day, whether they're in the cities or in the partners that Holly's working for. And to solve those, save those dogs, not because, we know we can't bring them all to the Sanctuary, it's not enough room, and would be lovely, but it's just not going to happen. But also to find other alternatives, so that when we aren't able to step in and help, when we have to say we can't help, we get calls and emails on a constant basis for people looking to get animals into the Sanctuary, and our team has to, and Michelle's a part of that, but Dogtown at the moment, in her role, has to say no a lot, say no the overwhelming amount of time. So what we struggle with is what else can we offer? And so I think that's kind of the perspective in terms of where we were thinking as a group of exploring other options. As Judah said, we apologize in terms of how the communication came across and did not, not do enough effort. We were in our minds really trying to do the right thing, not just for a dog, but for many dogs in our care. And I can totally understand how those of you who hear about this think it is, how on earth could we think that is the right thing? So just trying to give you that context of all of the animals that we're dealing with. There's a, I was in a meeting today, and on the wall was the list of the high-priority dogs written that we're really working hard to get to the Sanctuary, because right now there is no other option for them in the life-saving centers.
So obviously, that's the context in which we're working, and obviously, this isn't the only organization, you know, we have Dogtown and other training partners in Los Angeles area, but not just our need, the need for dogs that are at risk is bigger than our capacity. So we feel it's compelled to check out what else is going on. And it's really within that context that Dr. Carly went out, and then the opportunity to do a trade with a different organization who also does have some dogs at the National Canine Center came up, and that's where the trade comes in.
Okay.
Well, just because you have, you're the one who talks to everybody, huh?
Yes, okay. Yes, so that's where the opportunity for trade came in, because there is a need also at the National Canine Center for a handful of dogs that do need sanctuary replacement. And they originated from DogTales, and DogTales is the, is a Canadian rescue and sanctuary that saved the Ontario 21, as they're referred to from a dog fighting vest back in around 2015. And the founders of that organization partnered pretty quickly with Amy Sadler and saw some really great results in her training methods, which again, does not mean every dog is exposed to the higher-end aversive tools. And there were some really great outcomes, and I think even one of them became a career dog. And so with that, in order for us to explore how we could help the dogs that are currently at the National Canine Center, still under ownership by DogTales, because again, Amy's program does not own the dogs, DogTales stepped up and said, hey, we can take a number of dogs from you all, and we've worked with them in the past. Those of you that know Dingo, that's how we, that's how we accepted Dingo and traded some dogs, so that we could accommodate him. And he is a green collar dog with us, he's a sleepover favorite, he's doing great here. And so we saw this as another opportunity to continue helping other dogs that needed sanctuary replacement. And that's where DogTales came into the picture, to be able to help us determine how many dogs they could accept, help us determine how many dogs we needed them to accept to accommodate space for a handful of dogs from the National Canine Center. And so I think that's where a lot of the misperceptions came, in that when that list was being developed with some of Dogtown, that the assumption was that every single dog that was being considered was going to the National Canine Center. And that was not the case. We were going to be, we were talking about sending, like I said, a good number, nine or 10 dogs, to DogTales to accommodate the dogs from the National Canine Center. Did I miss anything?
No. But I mean, that's, so that's where, you know, everybody who's seen the list, it's one of several, they all have some different names on them, but the, the goal was to evaluate who could go, and who was potentially ready right away for adoption. Dogs like Tanya, ready right away for adoption, were, and probably still will go to the organization in Canada for adoption. But there are some on that list because they said, look, we would be happy to help with some who are behaviorally marginal but still need some help, and they would want for some of those, or were proposing that some of those would go to the National Canine Center if that was going to be helpful in their ability to get them more quickly adopted. And so that's where, we didn't do a good job communicating to Dogtown, a lot of concern about what was happening was shared out. And it was in the development without the communication. With that, that's kind of the backstory in terms of how did we get where we are, and people's concern for individual animals that are in our care, that we're currently meeting the needs for. Then, you know, there are things that have come from this that are, are we changing our operating protocols at the Sanctuary? No, we're not. Are we going to be adopting those training methods here? We have no intention of adopting those training methods here. Are there things that we think that we can learn from the adoption or from their center? One of the things that Dr. Carly took away from there was kind of the structured approach, and you know, if you want to explain some of the things that we did actually learn that are going to be part of how you're moving forward with the behavior team?
Absolutely. So the things that I really took away, that I have shared with our behavior team and various members of Dogtown, is some of the ways that they handled their group classes. So keep in mind, these are, these are dogs that fall into that, that behavior challenge of the top 10%. These are dogs that have had, have expressed human aggression, as well as dog-to-dog aggression. And when I was saying earlier that I saw some really good training, it came, it comes from the fact that these are dogs that were previously human aggressive and dog aggressive. Now that doesn't mean that they can, that the dogs that were dog aggressive can necessarily maintain dog skills with other dogs, but what they can do is do active training and proofing of behaviors in close proximity, as close to me and Michelle, as close to Sue, me and Judah, and that was really impressive for me. And I mean, this isn't, this isn't anything novel, we see this in other, in other training centers and things like that, but there are some takeaways from that that I feel like we need to implement here at the Sanctuary and here at our other life-saving centers. And so it's, it's a variation of group classes, and again, looking at the individual, so while it might be a group class and we might be working on proofing place, the five dogs in this class can be at varying levels, working on how to prove staying in place under the certain cues. And then there's one-on-one work with the animals, so that those that have that really extensive drive and really love to play fetch and things like that, they're allowed to exert that energy and do that freely, but also they need to learn that impulse control. So it's a lot of the things that we do here, but what I loved was the structure and the ability to do that through proofing, again, with various people. And that's where we need you guys as volunteers, and that's where we want this to go with this, with the new behavior program, and you guys are already helping us out tremendously. And with the development of our tier system, our volunteer tier system... And with the, the development of our tier system, our volunteer tier system, we're going to see more and more of that. And, but also with the development of our behavior program that I am overseeing with Becca and Haley as our two behavior consultants, that's part of my goal, is to incorporate more and more of you into our training, whether that be direct hands-on work or you being that person that's standing in, by a tree for us to prove reactive behavior and things like that. So again, it was just really impressive to see how they, they were really creative. I have some great videos that I'm happy to share with people to demonstrate how they prove various behaviors like leave it in place and just so many things. And the way that they, one standard thing for every dog is how they meet and greet new people. And it was really, I, I really liked that a lot and I want us to explore that further. And it's, we see that all the time, right? We hear that a lot, that so many of our dogs here, they have a special way of meeting people and we figure that out. And I'm not saying there's going to be the standard way that we have to do it for every single dog, but there were several things that I took away from their programming that I am excited to implement here. That does not involve e-collars, that does not involve modified prompt collars or any of those kinds of tools. It involves using the tools that we currently have here and continuing to expand our innovation and bringing more people into the fold.
So, you know, other things that I've heard is that the sanctuary makes a lifetime commitment. And we, we absolutely do. We're incredibly proud. And it's not just the sanctuary. We make a lifetime commitment to the animals that we help get to their new home. But that sanction, that commitment is not that we're committing to keep them at the sanctuary for the rest of their lives. And we do know that some of them, whether they're dogs or cats, while we can give them a second best home, we're not giving them the best home. And so we, it is in our interest and it's in our, the interest of dogs that we still want to save to be able to figure out how can we not be pressured by time, but be responsive to time and to be responsive to actually the best outcome for the animals that come into our care, knowing that we feel the same commitment to the animal that we can't help yet, whether that's a dog or a cat. And so again, if, we're not changing that commitment to the care that we give here. We're not changing that if they need more time, that we will work with them. And if they need to live here, we'll give them the best possible life that we can here. But we can't, or we don't operate in a vacuum. There are other dogs and every, if you are part of that admissions team that says no, you may not see it, but you know they're killing some of those dogs. And we should care about that. And that informs an urgency. It doesn't mean we should be irresponsible. It doesn't mean we should rush, but it does inform an urgency. It's also part of why we founded the sanctuary in the first place. It was to save lives. But I do want to be clear, we're not trying to compromise that special thing that we all understand, that commitment, that we do want to make sure that it's a place for healing, that it's a place where we're respecting what they need, but not ignoring the environment that we're working in and trying to save more dogs.
I just wanted to add that while yes, we're exploring this program, that isn't the only thing that we're exploring to really address, you know, this consistent request for help with this team. So really looking at how we can address our marketing differently, how we can look, promote our dogs differently and cats and other animals, making sure that we're highlighting those best qualities of those animals, really working with our team to become more involved in the adoption process so that more people are talking to all of the visitors and volunteers coming through the sanctuary, because we do get a lot of people coming through and I think sometimes we miss opportunities. And really, you know, we'll be looking at all of our processes to make sure that we're working efficiently so our caregivers have the time to work on specific behaviors or incorporate just general work that you can do within your day to help shape some of the behaviors we want to see or that might help them to get into homes. So it's, while yes, we're exploring outside options, we're also exploring how we can do more or things differently within our own team, as, as well as obviously the behavior programming that Dr. Carley's talked about.
All right, so that's kind of the context. And I know a lot of folks came with, with different questions and, and I don't want to use all the time with us talking and not really allowing for that. I don't know if we have any cards to start with or if anybody wants to raise their hand and we can, we do have a wireless mic, so we can bring that to you if you have kind of questions, et cetera.
I have a question about, we brought up the LA and New York City living situation for the dogs there, but I don't see anywhere with us sending dogs other places like to Florida, which we're not going to do. How does that help the animals in LA and New York if we're bringing animals in from Canada?
Well, a couple of things. We do still, we are networking out dogs from our other locations. We don't only use the sanctuary as an, as an option. We also use our life-saving centers as an option for adoption for our dogs from the sanctuary. So it is more of a systemic game of chess than kind of one-to-one. So it's, it, it does end up a little bit more complicated than that, but.
Yeah, we just did, this is dogs and cats. We did a, a trade with LA for, we took in one dog for them and they received six dogs from us who went up for adoption at the KLA Center. We just traded one cat, we took in one cat from New York and they took 18 teenage kittens.
Wow!
Yeah. And adult cats who had been looking for outcomes. We had a couple of cats who we knew were just amazing cats that just went up to Salt Lake City. One of them, I don't remember how long that cat had been here, but that cat was adopted within a week in Salt Lake City. So we are looking to continue to, to, as Michelle said, you know, do even more of our own internal work, but that is happening. It, it doesn't, it doesn't really make like the front page of the papers in our communication. So I think we can find ways to be able to share that information about what we're doing internally a little bit better with you guys.
Yeah, I was going to say, good news doesn't seem to travel quite as quickly.
So in order to better organize a behavior consultant department, are you looking to hire more consultants after several have left? And are you going to start staffing appropriately?
Our, so the training department or the trainers, the trainer to dog ratio at National Canine Center, which is one of the things that she observed is one to six. The caregiver to dog ratio is one to 36. So we have a staffing ratio of one to 12. And that's not a training ratio. We are looking at, not all of our dogs need that kind of intensive approach to training. So we are looking at that more focused approach that Dr. Carley mentioned. We have, and we are looking at redesigning the work so that we're ensuring that the priorities, that it's, actually we're prioritizing what's going to be best for helping the dogs in, in the workload that we're asking our caregivers to do. And then when we've done that, we can evaluate whether or not that's going to result in a change in, in staffing. But that's our current staffing ratio in Dogtown. At our current level is one to 12.
So at those places.
And that's with, that's in terms of on deck on a given day as opposed to our actual headcount ratio to dogs is one to eight.
Right. So in Florida, do they have, it's a training facility, so do they deal with volunteers? Do they deal with tour guides and whatnot that happens at the sanctuary day in and day out?
Well, our volunteers are an assistance to us. And I'm not saying that some aren't, that they actually take additional work. But no, this is, this is a closed facility in that regard. We are reviewing how our volunteer program can better maximize the value that our visiting volunteers bring because they take a little bit more time, they're not coming fully trained. There are recurring volunteers who are immediately an asset. Obviously, all of you guys who volunteer already know how to plug in. You're not a management burden for anyone. So those things are, they're, they're all being worked on. They, it does take time because they're all connected to different pieces, but it is absolutely being reworked on. And again, we know that there's a very heavy work burden, but there are also some things that are, that we think we can figure out not having to be part of the routine day as we're redesigning the work that's expected in the different departments.
Could I ask a follow-on to that? After coming from the school system where supposedly the student-to-teacher ratio was one to 24, but really they were counting librarians and counselors and custodians as that, do you guys just count the caregivers that are?
That was caregivers and team leads.
Team leads, okay.
That was not admin, that wasn't manager, that wasn't, that was just caregivers and team lead ratio. And that's just Dogtown. I didn't do the math.
Okay, thank you.
But I know that that's kind of a hot topic.
And I'll add, there are times that that ratio is different if there's someone on PTO or for our different areas, it might vary depending on how we staff a specific area. And we really are looking at, you know, in those areas, like the lodges where the buildings, like the work is spread out and those dogs are all individual, we may staff that a little heavier than another area where they have volunteer help with dogs that can go out with volunteers and, you know, they can easily kind of go in and out of the run. So it's not like, it does vary by area.
Something right here. For anyone who came in late, can you explain the dogs that you were going to send to Amy or not send to Amy or send to Canada or not send to Canada? There were like nine dogs that you guys were anticipating sending. Can you just clarify again where those dogs are going and if they're going?
We're, we are still working through a trade with Dog Tales in Canada. They've been a great adoption resource for dogs that we've sent to them before. We're not sending any dogs at this time to National Canine Center. We haven't finalized a list, so I can tell you, I can't even tell you who's been considered because we haven't finalized a list. Unless we have, I have, no, no. Well, I mean, the last night, yeah. So as of Friday, we haven't, so we still haven't.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll add, when we're working with other organizations to do trades, we, there is a lot of back and forth conversation because we do want to make sure the dogs that are coming to us are a good fit for us and the dogs that we're sending, or cats or whatever species that are going to the other group are going to be successful for them as well. We aren't interested in sending an animal all the way across the country to then just have to turn around and come back. So we want to make sure it is a good fit on all sides of things. So, you know, a lot of our, the organizations that we work with will give us kind of their criteria and then we'll propose animals that we can fit into that criteria.
Yeah, kind of a follow-up to that. So my question is, if you send a dog to Dog Tales, what's the guarantee that they don't send it to Florida or even worse, euthanize the dog?
That particular organization has a lot of the same values in terms of saving lives. It's actually a philanthropist who is an incredibly wealthy gentleman who's made it his mission to save dogs, including fighting BSL in Ontario. And he's part of the activists to make that happen. And so he is already aligned in a lot of what we're thinking. You may agree that he's not aligned in terms of the training methods that he's okay with. He doesn't use those training methods. That's actually why he sends dogs to Amy, that they don't use those training methods there. And we are able to, we keep an open line of communication with anyone that we send dogs to. It is, does happen that we will send dogs or cats or other animals to organizations and they actually can't adopt them out and we take them back. We maintain that lifetime commitment. So that happens probably rarely because of all the work we do in advance to try to make sure we're really making the right matches, but it, it absolutely can and must happen. But we keep those communication lines open.
Well, and this is part of how that can work. You know, we oddly enough did an adoption here to folks in Panguich and we got a call from a vet in Louisiana that our dogs were there. And we got the network partner who got them on a transport and we got them back here within 48 hours. So part of the value of having that kind of a network is having a real-time responsiveness when it's not working. It is not a one-and-done, don't let the door hit you kind of situation.
Even the cat that came from New York was originally adopted from the sanctuary. New York was the closest life-saving center to where they live now. That was an adoption, not a transfer. But we took the cat back in New York and then they were able to work to, we had a cross-country drive where they met in Kansas City to get the cat back.
And in most of our transfers, we do have a transfer agreement that establishes that understanding of, of us taking the dog or the cat back.
You're not just passing the buck or doing them in and running or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No, and believe me, we'd have been torched a long time ago if that was the case.
I'm having trouble understanding the management process that went on here. In simplistic terms, what I've heard is there was an approach and it was known here that these two training tools were in use. So you dispatch the doctor to observe and make a judgment. And on the basis of that, you made, somebody made a decision to go ahead until the word got out and there was an uproar. Is there, was there scientific literature, academic literature to have been reviewed or that you did review concerning these tools that might have gone into the decision-making? How did that decision process come about? Was it, and no, no espersance on your observation, but it seems to me strange that something of this magnitude would be taken on the basis of one person's three days' observations.
Judah, do you want to speak to the historical relationship with Amy?
Well, yeah, I can, I'll speak to, so there, there are two things. There is a historical relationship in working with Amy. She founded an organization, Dogs Playing to Life. We have utilized them as a resource in implementing playgroups in our life-saving centers. We've also helped facilitate her sharing and implementing playgroups for dogs in shelters across the country. And she, that is, that organization's work. We're not a primary funder, but we do have a historical connection going back quite a few years. That being said, we still felt like it was important to check it out. We do know that there's science that says you should never. There are recommendations for if you do from the ASVAB, or I'm trying to think of the Society of Veterinary Behaviorists that provide a parameter for, in which if you, how you, if you are going to use aversive tools, the criteria and the approach for recognizing adverse effects from that, she, I know operates within those guidelines. There is not great research in terms of the, I think the phrase you used was a balance approach. That's not my, that's not my language for it. But there's not a lot of study, there are studies that are very specific to punish But there's not a lot of study, there are studies that are very specific to punishment-based. There are studies that are very specific to positive-based that I know were, have been reviewed and I know that's part of where kind of the concern comes from. So I don't know if there's more context on research that you want to add.
I think you covered it pretty well. Yes, there is research out there that suggests to never use these kinds of, kinds of methods for a very, for a variety of reasons. I think that the methodology needs to be really strictly looked at under those studies that are frequently cited and the conditions under which the training is utilized and the mechanics and precision in which using these tools is administered. That being said, I want to be very clear that I am not endorsing E-collars or modified pinch collars. But yes, there is research to support them and to not support them.
I think you guys have covered it.
So just talking about the dogs at the Sanctuary, just limiting us to us. The caregivers are a very important part of the dogs' lives, but I think everybody who's volunteered at the Sanctuary realizes that their workload is enormous. And they do do a lot of good things for the dogs. I'm certainly not saying they don't. But half of their time, especially during tourist season, is wrangling volunteers and their workload is enormous. And I think a lot of them burn out quickly because of that. It seems to me that the dog training behavior consultant, whatever you want to call it, department has shrunk drastically. It's down to two people, I think, now.
That's correct, two.
So, and how many dogs there could benefit from training? That's, that's a ridiculous ratio. Are there plans to beef up that, to develop a better training program so that these dogs can be helped right here without having to send them elsewhere and use other methods?
Yeah, I think as we've been discussing, there's a combination of approaches and through utilizing other partners in the trades, it has been successful for many of our dogs in getting more quickly placed into homes and safely so. And to your first point or your first question about the behavior programming, that is, we're still at the tip of the iceberg in developing this because we are truly revamping everything that we've been doing as far as how the behavior consultants' time is used. And so previously, we did have four behavior consultants and four caregiver team leads. And there's a restructure that we agreed upon based on some of the brainstorming feedback from Dogtown needing more support, that the team leads were stretched too thin. And so the goal was to switch from having four and four to having six team leads and two behavior consultants. Yes, that's a reduction in behavior consultants, but the goal with this new behavior programming is what we, what we've done is we have identified one area in Dogtown, which is Dulce's, that we will be focusing our behavior work in with myself and the two behavior consultants and the caregivers and the team lead and really prioritizing our population to which dogs need the most structured work and at what level so that we can get them into homes and have a constant rotation so that all of the dogs have that structured work. That's not taking away necessarily from the behavior work that is currently being done with all of the other dogs at, in Dogtown. It's just a different approach so that we can really have that really focused work on the dogs that are just, they just need one little thing to get into their homes. And the caregivers are doing an amazing job at doing that, but to your point, they, they have a lot of other responsibilities. So this is part of what we were trying to accomplish with the new behavior program.
Yeah, I'll add that, I think it was touched on a couple of times before, we're looking at what people are doing during the day. So one of the things in our, based on the brainstorming feedback we got from Dogtown as well as some initial brainstorming and whiteboarding we did was we looked at what are the behavior consultants spending their time on. And they were actually spending a lot of their time in meetings, not working with dogs. So even when we had four of them, they were not actively doing all that they could do in a concentrated way. So we're reviewing all of that. So if they are, you know, doing something that's a demo or sitting in on a group meeting that they're contributing maybe a piece of information to, that maybe we could have done that through, we have electronic communications boards that we could use. How can we make the most use of their time? And we're not just doing that in Dogtown, we're doing that in Catworld, we're doing that in our clinic. If you think about veterinarians, a veterinarian has a really skilled set of things that they can do. You really don't need veterinarians cleaning pages and picking up, doing laundry. What you want is those veterinarians really focused on the work that only a veterinarian can do. And so we're trying to think about the behavior team in that way, too. And as was mentioned, we're also trying to make more opportunities for volunteers to participate. So we've actually met with a few volunteers who actually are coming to the table with a high level of dog training and behavior skills, some of whom have volunteered and worked in behavior rehabilitation programs with other organizations. And the way our training was set up now, even though they had those skills, we weren't able to use them because they were restricted, they had to go to a certain amount of whatever to get to a certain tier. And we're trying to really open the door up. We're just at the tip of the iceberg, as Harley said, of that in terms of like how we can peel that onion away to make more use of everybody's time in your organization better.
And I see that Kimmy has collected some cards and those folks that chose to submit that way, I don't want to ignore that, so.
And I've been covering a couple of the questions, some of them I know have already been answered. One, will we, will we be using aversive training here at the Sanctuary?
No. Well, not the, I mean, okay, so avversives. That's a wide spectrum of avversives. I think the avversives at question are E-collars and pinch collars and prong collars, no.
I think it's worth elaborating on avversives because they'll make, people make an assumption that it only means that and it doesn't. So it, which that and a not, it creates a lot of misunderstanding.
So, yeah, so I'll touch on that really quickly. As I briefly mentioned, avversives, I kind of compare it to shy dogs, that there's a spectrum of shyness when we talk about shy dogs. There's a spectrum of avversives when we talk about avversives. Avversives can be something like even red light, green light and teaching loose leash walking, that's pressure and release on the leash, on the leash on the dog. And so avversives can be anything that can cause pain, fear, things like that. But what is aversive is up to that individual animal as well. And so on the lower scale, what I categorizes as lower scale of avversives would be red light, green light training for loose leash walking. We, even when we're breaking up dog fights that we have tried every other effort, we have to sometimes move to spraying water on them, dumping water on them. That's an aversive. It's to get, it's to, it's an interrupter. And so there is an array of avversives from those kinds of things, even just saying, uh-uh, no, to escalated yelling, things like that, all the way up to physical force, whether it's hands-on force or non-hand-on force brought by the handler through electric collars and pinch collars.
So it sounds like you will not be using E-collars, modified prong collars on Best Friends Sanctuary dogs, you will not be sending them to rescues or training centers using these other methods, is that correct, Ray?
Correct.
Yeah. But what's an entirely clear to me from tonight is what is Best Friends' position on the use of E-collars in the rehabilitation of shelter dogs more generally? Do you think that E-collars could be potentially helpful in rehabilitating dogs? But is what Amy Sadler's doing a then, a usual program in helping shelter dogs?
So as a usual program within shelters, I personally do not think that that is the way to go in training. As I mentioned when I was explaining my experiences with Amy's programming, I was surprisingly impressed, at the same time uncomfortable, because those are not tools that I feel the need to use or endorse. And so, I mean, from an organizational perspective, I would like for someone else to speak to that.
I think that her program is benefiting the dogs that come to her. The fact is, the dogs that come to her, if they did not have that option, would be being killed. It is a sad reality that shelters do not have access to training resources. And I am not going to put myself in a position of condemning solutions that lead to loving homes for those dogs.
But what's the Sanctuary?
Well, here, let me, I'm going to...
Yeah, as the chair of our board.
And founder. We never had a policy against using any of these tools. The idea that this is somehow a change in policy is incorrect. We've had a preference not to use them, but we never had a policy against it. In fact, late nineties, early twos, shelving is that, is it?
Yeah.
We brought a trainer in to do demonstrations and work with some of our challenging dogs with E-collars. And we bought a bunch of them. It was a very, he demonstrated them without stress, without distress, without pain and was very effective. What happened was, we weren't able really to replicate that. And so we stopped using them. So we never really incorporated them because it takes a great deal of skill, it's something that's not, you just push buttons and, you know, crank up the volume and it's, it is a skill. And we didn't have sufficient skill and we weren't really, you know, dedicated to using that and developing those skills because we were, having bought those, we didn't actually implement them. But we weren't, not, we weren't philosophically opposed to them. Our principal, Best Friends', essential philosophy is no kill. We value the life of the dog, the life of the cat, the life of the horse, the life of the bird, the life of whatever, over whatever. It's always for us compared to what? That dog, if death is a comparison, then what is the, what is our remedy for that? And no kill is our North Star. Not any particular training philosophy or tools or this net. We prefer, obviously, to be as gentle and as kind and compassionate as we possibly can, but we never had a policy against this. And if you were here thirty years ago, you have seen the way we housed our dogs. We housed them in crates out in the runs.
Boxes.
In boxes. It was not the most unstressful or...
Dog houses.
They were dog houses in the, in the dead of winter, ten degrees below zero. It's not something that we're proud of, that we were able to, but that's what we could afford to do. And that's what we had to do in order to save lives. So our North Star is saving lives and no kill. So that's, just to give you a perspective on the historical relationship to this and the fact that you, there's an assumption that this is a change in policy, but in fact, there's never been a policy against it. There's been a training preference not to use them and it's become a default training procedure and methodology within the Sanctuary. But it wasn't and never has been an official policy.
Talking well, they're waiting for the mic.
Recognizing that you're bumping up again seven forty-five, which was your, and first, one brief comment, and based on my PhD in clinical psychology, I don't have a continuum of aversive. What we're really referring to is punishment as the application of a training principle. But the main question I wanted to ask, and I actually didn't know you were here, is recognizing your comment, which we've heard before in terms of we've never had an explicit principle, and hearing it represented in a variety of different ways in the meeting, my question is, are you aware or do you believe that the application of punishment techniques is highly offensive to a significant portion of your community of supporters? To the point where that principle, however you would introduce it or historically justify it, would cause a significant schism both in the organization, the support the organization has and the reputation it enjoys? Or do you feel that there's not necessarily a large contingent that would find the application of punishment or the acceptance of punishment in network partners acceptable? That's a fairly straightforward question.
And I believe that if the, if, what we're talking about is punishment, that punishment as a training methodology doesn't, if you're, if you're frightening an animal, you're losing your animal. If you're frightening a dog, you're punishing, you're losing the dog. If the technique as it is being used and as we've seen it used is an attention getter and it's not punishment and not perceived as punishment, it's not whipping, it's not beating start at nine thirty, then I'm, and if it saves lives, then I'm prepared to look at that. You asked me the question of, are you aware that this is, you know, that there's a major... Justine, what are you doing, Justine?
I'm just recording what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there's a, you're saying, suggesting that there's a significant schism within the organization or significant schism within our membership, well, we have to address that. But it's not going to change our North Star, which is no kill. That is our North Star. And right now, as we've worked to get to this point and that the profile of many of the animals that we're relating to are vastly different than they were previously and vastly different than they were when we started this organization, which was a difficult dog, was an adolescent lab who dug holes in the backyard and jumped up on the kids. Then we are looking at having to relate to, we, our policies have changed, our procedures have changed, our methodology have changed over the years. We started as a very, as a kind of cloistered enclave that was very protected and did not reach out. When we were unable to address the needs of the animals that were coming, being, we were requested to be, to care for or to, whose lives we were being asked to impact, then we started changing the way we did our work and we started doing programs outside of the Sanctuary. We started taking in and working with shelters and rescues all around the country. So over the years, and we've taken in, again, as we, as the message and the work has progressed, that lab who jumps and digs holes in the backyard is now not a problem. It's being addressed by local rescues or it's being addressed by the trainer at the Petco or it's being, it is in a happy home. That dog is not a problem. And so we have, and the methods that were used and the training techniques would never enter into the picture. We had a very rarefied and luxurious kind of situation. We are now relating to circumstances where we no longer have that luxury. And I'm not saying that this is a preferred solution. I'm not just saying that we're going to use it, but the idea that we are categorically opposed to it is just not the case and we never have been. And that is just a fact. So while I don't believe that we probably, it's highly unlikely that we would use it, I don't believe that this is something that we've ever written off as a no-no, again, our North Star is lifesaving. Preventing those dogs from being killed because for some reason or other, they are not, not able to find a home. And that's those are the dogs that we're talking about now, so.
Can I add something to that? Because I deal with this a lot on a macro level in terms of finding the right balance between appropriate risk and appropriate risk mitigation and reckless behavior, which of course, we would, we, we would never condone your reckless behavior. And I, I have had people criticize me and our programs and our teams for group housing. I have had people criticize me and my team and you all for endorsing open adoptions because there is some risk associated with that. I have had people in our movement criticize me and my team and you guys for conducting trap neuter return programs because putting a cat back out into its outdoor home poses some risk. And so I would like to end tonight... And so I would like to end tonight in saying that Best Friends is committed to being a responsible steward of our animals and the people who work for us and our volunteers. And I've never worked for a more conscientious organization. I know I'm biased, I'm in leadership, I have a particular point of view. But I do hope that we can leave this room by understanding that we are all working to do the right thing by the animals. And we could choose to preemptively kill all of them in order to make sure that never of them has any risk of anything bad happening to them. But we have taken a course that is finding that right balance and a commitment to finding the right balance between the appropriate care and then, and sometimes the limited risk that comes with the work that we're doing. So I would just like to end it there and say thank you for everybody in your conversation, and for your volunteerism, and for your commitment and dedication. I know these issues are difficult, and I appreciate everyone continuing to just have an open dialogue and, and understand that we all have the best of intentions, and we're going to continue to improve, because we're willing to have these tough conversations. So thank you, everyone.
Actually, I think we've just been overruled. Are there any other questions?
We are out of time, too. We have to wrap up that room. Oh, you, we go over?
We've been overruled.
Okay, okay, great, overruled.
Overruled that we have to be out by, so, we were talking about...
I've been volunteering for a couple of years, just off and on, and I've always considered Best Friends to be the gold standard for animal treatment. I'm just wondering what the precipitating factor was for making room for more dogs? Sending dogs out, giving them an opportunity to, you know, become adoptable, but what was the precipitating factor for making that room? Was it one of your collaborators that you're treating dogs with, the pressure on the organization, or a donor? I'm just trying to figure out what the precipitating...
I mean, our precipitating factor for trying to figure out the ability to house more dogs is that, or to make room for dogs, or to help dogs that are, don't have a different outlet in another organization, is that we're trying to help more dogs. It is, that is our guiding imperative. Those dogs don't currently have an adoption outlet. If freeing up that space, helping the other organization is going to put, so that other dogs at risk can be helped, that the dogs in our care are going to get into a home faster, there, those, the precipitating factor is what's going to be best for helping more dogs. And it's not because numbers of the urgency, it's because all of those are lives, and their preferred outcome is being in a home. And we're trying to figure out, how do we help make that happen?
Any other questions? You get the last word.
So this room is full of people who have donated money and time, and are very invested in the animal value sanctuary. What I want to know is, what are you going to do for transparency's sake? So the people who are investing this much themselves know what they're investing into. Because it feels like the conversation kind of started after the fact, and people are hearing different things, different versions, misinformation. So I think transparency is a huge thing, you have this much outside support, to know what people are actually supporting, and what's going on behind the doors.
Yeah, I, you know, I did start upfront apologizing for the way that we've handled the communication. But the fact is that the intention was when Dr. Carley went out to come back and share the experience with Dogtown, and to share what we were looking at, why we were looking at it, without the context of any other circumstance. And that was an, and the intention was for that to be an open process and an open dialogue. That didn't happen. The meetings that I chose to have with Dogtown to say, hey, we need to, we need to talk, what's going on, were because we didn't do that, and I preempted her presentation about the, about National Canine Center. Our commitment, and we made this commitment within dogs and cats and around the sanctuary, is building better processes for elevating topics and actually addressing them with, in a more open forum, in real time. And where we have a known stakeholder interest, we will make every effort to. We can't, we won't make every decision by committee, but we will absolutely be, we know things that are important to folks, that we have the opportunity to bring more of a voice into the decision-making process. And we know, and as somebody who was providing guidance to it, I know I made a pretty big mistake in sort of shepherding that communication. But that, I mean, that's the best that I can say, that we had the best of intention, and we didn't execute on it, and we will do better in the future.
Real quick.
Hey, so, I think I'll just close this out. And I just want to thank all of our, I see a lot of volunteers here that I recognize and staff that are here to support this effort tonight. And really just want to thank you for coming out. It shows how much you care and how much we all care about the animals. I, I think the question that I want to ask you is, why, why are you guys here? I think I know why you're here, but just shout out some answers.
Information.
Information.
We're here for the animals.
The animals.
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 E-collars.
E-collars.
Tonight's meeting.
Tonight's meeting.
Transparency.
Transparency.
Restored trust in the organization.
Restored trust. So I don't know if you guys know who I am, but I'm Julie Castle, I'm the CEO of this organization. Just really want to understand the foundation of why you're here. How many have been to the sanctuary in the last week? Tell me your favorite animals that are there. Like just shout out the names.
Billy Holiday.
Keith Tomlin, who else? I can't, I, Smokey.
Dude.
Mrs. Potts, okay. Who else? I heard Stinky, I don't know who Stinky is. Listen, here's, here's the bottom line, I think you raised a very good question. What's your name in the back, in the plat?
I'm Heather.
Heather. How many volunteer town halls have we done?
I don't, honestly, no.
We, this is our third. This is a measure of our wanting to connect with you guys on a more regular basis. And we haven't done that before. We really want to start doing this on a more regular basis, on a quarterly basis. And I would ask you, you've named all your favorite animals. And so in the time that we've been meeting here tonight, over 400 animals have died in this country, that are just like the animals that you named tonight, that are just like Curly. And this is not something that Francis and Faith and Gregory and Silva and Stephen sort of said when they were in their mid-20s, hey, we're going to start a movement, and that movement is no kill. But guess what? They founded the sanctuary here, and it evoked a movement across the country to think differently about how we treat our friends, our animal friends. And before these guys broke ground in 1984, the state of the state was, 150 years ago, the whole reason this thing started was because animals were running around New York City. And it was a legitimate public issue. It was a rabies issue. And the public was outraged. They said, hey, we don't want to get rabies, city of New York, do something. And the city said, okay, and they put a bounty on every single animal, dogs, 25 cents a dog. And bounty hunters went out and rounded up animals, put them in a cage, and ducked them in the East River. That's how they dealt with animals back then. And the public obviously was outraged, just like now. And they said, wait a second, that isn't what we meant. And so the city decided to set up a shelter system. And it mushroomed across the country, and that's the system that we have today. And guess what? It did not change from the late 1800s until 1984, when the founders broke ground at Best Friends, and started the country thinking about something differently. Thinking about life-saving, thinking about how we can do better for our companion animals. And when that happened, 17 million animals were dying in this country. And today, it's less than a million. But the point is, is what these guys started with, the ethic, was no kill. The ethic was ending this travesty, and looking at a time when not only can we say we're going to do right by our animal friends, all your favorite animals, they are in every city in America, dying in throes. And it is not only our privilege, but it is, it is our obligation to save as many of those lives as we can. And not just here at the sanctuary, but in all of our regional centers, and all of the cities across America. That is our calling. That is your calling. And if you think that's different, then that is not what Best Friends was founded on. Best Friends was founded on no kill. And the sanctuary is a very special place. It is a place of last resort for a lot of animals, but it has always been a place of innovation. It was the place that the first kidney transplant was done for a cat. It was the place for FIV colonies, when no one was doing that. It was the place Holly Sizemore is the person that came up with the community cat programs, who has saved tens of thousands of lives. It is the place that took in the Victory Dogs. It is the place that will continue to innovate. It will not innovate at the expense of the trauma or health of animals, but it will innovate and take risks. When we are facing a national challenge, somebody asks the question, why did we decide to do this now? We decided to do this now because shelters across America are pleading for help every single day to us, to Sue Cosby, to Michelle, to Dr. Carley, to Judah, to me, to Francis, to anybody that works at the sanctuary, saying, we have no solutions for these dogs. And we can't wait six months, because we have a limited admissions, an open admissions facility, where we are taking in dogs that have issues and we need to relate to them. And that is what we're about. We're about finding solutions, not just for here at the sanctuary, but for communities across America, to help save lives. Because this is about lives. This is about taking America no kill. This is about solving a societal issue that has plagued us for 150 years. And we are grateful that we have the supporters and the will of the public to solve this issue. And we can't do this without you. But we can't do it with this contentious forum. And this is why we're here today, is to talk to you about this. Before tonight, and before the last two volunteer meetings, we never talked to you guys, not in this way. So I'm saying to you tonight, come next time, bring your questions, we'll take all the bullets, all the arrows, we will answer them as transparent, transparently as we can. As I said to Judah the other day, the way this went down with Amy Sattler and that whole situation, it was a huge mistake, to your point. But it wasn't that we were trying to hide something, or not be transparent. Because you can count on this organization to always do right by the animals and carry the flag of no kill. Because no kill is making a difference, and no kill is turning heads, and no kill is the only thing that has changed America's shelter system since the late 1800s. Thanks for coming, we'll see you next time. I really do appreciate you guys and love you. We'll see you later.